Okay, you can go ahead, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment to Order this morning. We're going to be receiving a couple of presentations from some friends in the Yukon. And this is a public meeting. I just want to... So my name is Kevin O'Reilly. I'm the MLA for Frame Lake. And I'll be serving as the chair today for the meeting. And unfortunately, our chair is in Tuk-Tayak-Tuk, and they have a bit of a COVID outbreak happening right now. So he's taking care or working with his community to help manage that. So I've been asked to chair the meeting this morning. So just a little bit of background for everybody who might be watching and for our friends in Yukon. The role of our Standing Committee is to review legislation that's introduced in the House. We've also identified a number of priorities ourselves related to economic development and environment. The presentations we are getting this morning are part of one of the priorities that we have decided to undertake, which is looking at ways to support northern business in the Northwest Territories. And so we're trying to look at ways in which we can create better policies for our government to stimulate and diversify our economy, particularly with regard to indigenous businesses as well. So we're holding this meeting this morning to hear from indigenous businesses and to understand better how indigenous procurement policy actually works in the Yukon. So we are continuing our work in this area. And of course, we're going to be... We're welcome to hear any other submissions, presentations on this topic to this committee. And arrangements can be made with our clerk if there's anybody out there who's interested in being part of our review of these matters. And of course, at the end, we will be preparing a report for our Legislative Assembly. And we will make recommendations to the government cabinet and looking forward to getting responses from them as well. So I'd just like to remind all members and presenters to direct all questions and comments to myself as chair. And if you could wait to be recognized, and that way we can run an efficient and effective meeting with all of us online as well. So I'd like to invite my colleagues here in the Northwest Territories to introduce themselves for the record. And I'll start with committee members. Mr. Johnson, would you like to start us off, please?
Good morning. My name is Ryland Johnson. I'm the MLA for Yellowknife North and always happy to chat with our neighbors in the Yukon.
Good morning. My name is Katrina Nockelby. I'm the MLA for Great Slave, and thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Mr. Norton, I see you've joined us. Thanks very much. Would you like to introduce yourself as well, please? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome, everybody. My name is Steve Norton. I'm the MLA for Tunawara, Williston.
Thanks to all the... Is there anybody else that I've missed? Any members? I think I've got everybody. We also have some staff with us here this morning. At the Legislative Assembly, we've got Gene Yarris, who's serving as our committee clerk today, and Amy Lizotte, who's our committee advisor. And I see that we have James Thomas, another research advisor, helping us probably with the technology behind the scenes. And our usual clerk, Jennifer Frankie Smith, is joining us as well from home this morning. So I think I've got everybody. I'd like to... Gene, have I got everybody? I just want to double check on that.
Yeah, that's everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks very much. So I'd like to now invite Mr. Albert Drapeau, Executive Director for the Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce, to introduce yourself and anyone that may be with you. If you could proceed with your presentation and warm welcome from Yellowknife to Whitehorse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Albert Drapeau. I'm a French and northern Tautoni descent. I am a citizen of Selkirk First Nation and a member of the Wolf Clan. And thank you and good morning from Yukon. It's still a little bit dark here. And it's great to see everyone from NWT. It's been a long time. And we look forward to the day where we can meet in person. So thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge that... Oh, sorry. I forgot about Amos. Amos Westrop, my counterpart and colleague and good friend, who was instrumental in organizing the Yukon First Nation procurement policy and working with the team leaders from Yukon Government and the Yukon First Nation governments to get this policy drafted and implemented. So welcome, Amos.
Thank you, Albert, and good morning, everyone.
So before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territories of the Flannan Dunn and the Taon Kua Chen First Nations in Whitehorse, and that we're presenting to you, the Northwest Territories Legislative Assembly, on the traditional territories of the Yellowknife Standing First Nation and the homeland of the North Slave Metee Alliance. So thank you for allowing us to do that. So can you see the slides?
We can't, but I'm sure our clerk is going to help us with that. And just for the record, our regular chair, Mr. Jacobson, Jackie Jacobson, the MLA for Nanakput, has joined us. I'm just determining whether he would like to take over his chair or not, but we'll sort that out at our end. And I think our clerk now has the slides up on the Zoom platform so that we can see them at our end, and hopefully you can as well. But Monsieur Drapeau, please go ahead and merci beaucoup.
Yeah, you're welcome. So we're on slide three now. There. So Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce is a not-for-profit organization. And as of August, we had about 213 members. And it is a mixture of members of First Nation businesses, industry business from across all sectors, so the mining sector, tourism sector, energy sector, technology sector. We are inclusive, so members don't have to be only from Yukon. We do have members from NWT, the Deton Cho and Denin D... Daryl Bolio's group. I can't pronounce it. Denin Day, capital N. So they are members as well. We have members from Alberta and B.C. and of course Alaska and Nunavut. The purpose of Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce, back in 2014 when it was formed, there was really no place for industry to go to learn about Yukon First Nation governments and the protocols and the values of First Nation governments and people. And we have 11 self-governing First Nations out of the 14. And with that, each of them have different protocols in how they want to be engaged. So we know that Yukon is small and that we need to work together. And Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce helps to build that relationship and bridge the link between industry and Yukon First Nation Development Corps. And the Development Corps can then go to the governments and relay introductions to their respective governments and provide information about how they are to be engaged. So with that said, Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce, we want to build a strong private sector. We want to see our youth get into the private sector. And in order for that to happen, we have to work together to build a climate that would foster that growth. The Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce allows us to speak with government and advocate to government on various legislation. A good example would be the First Nation procurement policy. Prior to the government extending the invitation to Yukon First Nation governments to participate in that process, Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce was at the table, the procurement table, to advocate that we need to be included at the table. And we have a number of businesses. You may know Paul Bruner. He was the CEO of Daquakata at the time. And he gave an example of northern doors and windows. And a project came up where the designer did not design the retrofit of replacement windows in a... Well, the Yukon College building. And it was like, you know what? We have a manufacturing company here. You need to look in your own backyard and support the local. And that sticks in my mind because it was, you are so right. We need to support local. We need to provide the opportunities. And where there is opportunity, we have to make it easier for them to access. So with that said, those discussions occurred. And I'm very grateful for Paul for being on our board at that time and making that discussion happen. We feel that when Yukon First Nation businesses succeed, we all succeed as Yukon as a whole. Because we are small, we need to work together. And that means we need to form the partnerships, form the joint ventures that we did, or we invest in opportunities such as transportation, as in technology, things like that. So with that said, I'll go to the next slide. As I previously mentioned, Yukon First Nations have invested in line with their traditional values and in a number of diverse opportunities. Yukon First Nations have... I'm going to use the term in general terms of Yukon First Nation, meaning Development Corps and governments. So we have the investment in Air North by the Banpak Kua Chen. We have investment in Alkan Air with Nat'Chunak Dunn and Kawani Denashah. We have investments in Penash Ventures with seven First Nation Development Corps and Penash Ventures in Calgary to provide... It's like a private equity fund for technology. We have investments in real estate. We have investments in manufacturing. We have investments in service sectors. So with that, it helps provide employment, which is important to the community. It provides a return and it provides growth. And it's not only Yukon First Nation people working, it's Yukoners working. And that helps support everyone and our hopefully economy. The other thing, and I hear Daryl Bolio in my head right now, saying that in the north, we need to lead the infrastructure file. We need to have control over the northern infrastructure so that we get a return. We are able to invest and provide jobs for everyone. And with that said, I also chair my former Deputy Minister Harvey Brooks, saying, "In order for economic growth to occur, you need to have the economic infrastructure in place." So in order for mining, you need the roads, you need the airways, the airstrips. Like you need to have that economic infrastructure in place. In our case, there's a shortage of housing, so there's opportunities there for housing. And that's not just in Whitehorse. That's like in all the rural communities. There is a need for consistent and reliable internet connection. When the internet connection gets cut in Fort Nelson, it affects us all. We don't have our debit card. We don't have credit cards. It's cash only. And who has cash nowadays? So it's a severe impact. So that loop, which I think is a fiber optic loop, which is going through NWT and in Newvik, that project will help secure that consistency and that reliability. So next slide. This is a map of our self-governing First Nations within Yukon. Like I said, there is 11 sign self-government First Nations. In total, there is 41,595 square kilometers that have been negotiated. 25,900 of that is Category A land, which means the First Nation has surface and subsurface rights. 15,695 square kilometers are Category B, which is surface rights. And there is also the remainder of that would be the simple lands, where it's like the community base, where there's for housing and things like that. And the thing about Category A is that the First Nation governments have legislative authority over their settlement lands. Sorry, Category A. And they can create their own laws to administer and govern that. Within the traditional territory, there is a number of overlap issues. So when there is a project, and I'm going to use Newmont Gold Corp Coffee Creek project, that is in three overlaps. So that company will need to talk to Selkirk First Nation. They will need to talk to Trondek Kua Chen. They will need to talk to White River First Nation so that they can negotiate business terms and how they want to see things progress. Next slide. The Yukon First Nation governments and Development Corps are dedicated to wealth and prosperity for both businesses and their communities. We have approximately 7% of Yukon's labor force. We have about half a billion dollars in assets from our investments and from our settlement land... Sorry, settlement land assets, our settlement dollars, and the investments that we have done in businesses. And we contribute about 5.5 of Yukon's GDP. Next slide, please. So how we work for Yukon. When I first started, we had... That was back in 2016. And I was approached and was like, "What are the stats for Yukon First Nation businesses?" We did not know that. We did not have that information. So it took a while. And in 2019, we worked with the Yukon Bureau of Statistics and created a questionnaire... I shouldn't say questionnaire, survey questions that was incorporated into their Yukon Business Survey. And we were finally able to get those stats, and those stats are available on our website. We found out that of the participating businesses, there were about 294, 95 self-identified Yukon First Nation businesses in the Territory. Uh, in the territory. And uh, we know that there is a lot more. Uh, but they, we feel that over time, that will um, increase. Um. So. And that helps us plan for not only business, but for the education piece. For Yukon First Nation youth. Um, developing career. Uh, opportunities in the trades, in the professional services. Uh, it provides the uh, information about our contribution to GDP, our employment numbers that. Yukon First Nation businesses provide. Um, it gives us a starting point. And we. Um, the next survey is happening right now, so we should have those by twenty twenty-two. And uh, we'll see if there's progress. Um, as I mentioned, we've grown to over two hundred members. And um, we continue to bridge Indigenous development. And community corporations um, with industry across all sectors. And we do this by hosting forums. Um, in the past, pre-COVID, we had the Energy Mining Forum at Roundup. Uh, we have our events, our Roundup Reception. Uh, we have the Arctic Indigenous Investment Conference, and in twenty nineteen, we hosted one in Yellowknife. Um, in partnership with Daryl and Paul. Um, we were in twenty twenty um, going to host in Kalawit and. COVID hit and it got canceled. And um. And, and so last year, we hosted it virtually. And uh, it was not as well attended as in person. Um, and I, I chop that up to people being Zoom fatigue and. Uh, who wants to sit at their computer for eight, eight hours a day, so rightfully so. Um, and we just celebrated our seventh anniversary. It will be eight in January, so. Um, where we continue to go strong there. Next slide. Um. We, I believe in best in Yukon. Uh, we want to ensure that there are opportunities. Um, for Yukon First Nation businesses. Um, we want to ensure that there are opportunities for our people. Um, we, we are in a unique situation where we do have port access. In Skagway, we have port access in New Vic. Um, we have a road system, the only community not accessible by road is Old Crow. In Northern Yukon. Um, and which, I know that there are challenges with internet, but. As technology grows, um, we can. Figure that out. I, I recall going to Penmore a few years ago. And there was a, a group there talking about launching satellites, so rather than going. Around horizontally around the earth, they're going north to south, which would provide. More accessible internet and reliable services for um, northern communities. Um. Yukon First Nations, um, I think they're about twenty-five years old. And there, there are a lot of opportunities for. Uh, resource development or hydro development or energy development. Um, so. We need to um, make sure that uh, things are done according to their. Um, values and their needs. Um, and so the leadership in each of those uh, First Nation governments. Have a heavy weight on their shoulders. And they are with the responsibility of looking after their people and the, the resources in their traditional territories. Such as wildlife, fish and uh, um, their people. Um, investments in our people, always um, important. Uh, we need to support them and hold them up. And uh, we, we do this um, by providing the uh, education levels or. Funding, education funding, um, supporting them in their choice of career. Um, you know, uh. I was talking to Wendy Taylor, the President of Alcan Air, and she said, you know, in the north, there is a shortage of commercial pilots. Um, what can we do about that? Um. And it is uh, an amazing opportunity. Um, for young indigenous uh, people to get into the aviation sector. Um, and uh, with the partnership with Yukon University and Alcan Air. Um, they're developing a pilot program to address those, those needs. Um, next slide. So, setting the stage, um, uh. We know that um, everything doesn't happen overnight and it takes time. Uh. So, the Arctic Indigenous Investment Conference is Pan-Terr. Well, I'm gonna say Pan-Arctic, because we do include um, Alaska, we do have uh. NWT and New Vic and Northern Labrador. Um, participate in the Arctic Indigenous Investment Conference. The agenda is created. Um, from the business leaders across the north. And uh, where we can um, get the business leaders to speak and. Host uh, panel discussions um, and share their stories. I think that's always a good thing. Um, we also have the Pan-Arctic, Pan-Arctic Indigenous Investment Leaders Summit. Initially, it was a business council concept and. You know, I don't think we are ready yet. Uh, but rather, if we can have the group of Yukon are. Uh, the Pan-Arctic business leaders come together in a room. And uh, listen to keynote speakers about what's changing. Um, what's the trends, uh, uh, the common issues across the north. I think that can help set the stage for um, moving forward in the business world. Um, we continue to support the Yukon Geoscience, the AME BC Mineral Roundup. In Vancouver, we've attended PDAK. Um, we've attended uh. Uh, Yukon Gold Show, like a lot of conferences. Um, the STEM Conference, so uh, we. We want to share the Yukon First Nation voice and story. Next slide. So here is a list of uh, our partners that we deal with. Um. The Arctic Inspiration Prize, of course, Yukon Government. Uh, the Indigenous Development Corporations, Penmore. Our Single Trap to Success and these. Uh, White Horse Chamber of Commerce, Yukon Chamber of Commerce, Yukon Chamber of Mines, Yukon Contract, Contractors Association. Yukon First Nation Culture and Tourism, Yukon Mining Alliance, and the Yukon Women in Mining. All of these NGOs or organizations have a role to play in Yukon's economy. And supporting our people, and we believe in that, and so uh, we work with them to make that happen. Next slide. Now, the Yukon First Nation procurement process. Amos is gonna go into more detail about it. But here's just an introduction of it. And uh, the way back in twenty eighteen, Yukon Government and the Yukon. Uh, First Nation Government started discussions of developing a procurement policy.
You have some toast?
Yeah.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Drapo will get uh, Mr. Jacobson to mute his uh, uh, phone.
Sorry.
No problem.
Sorry.
No worries.
He's a busy guy these days, but uh, thanks, Jack. If you could mute your phone and uh, Sir Drapo, please go ahead.
Um, so yeah, uh, they, they started discussions on the procurement policy. And in twenty twenty, it was November, probably a year ago, pretty soon. Um, it was adopted and uh. Our role in the procurement process is the administration of the Yukon First Nation Business Registry. And um, the verification process. So we are working on that right now. Um, we have until December first, we. Um, to verify the. How do I say? The Yukon First Nation businesses that have applied to the registry. We're working on that now to verify them, and December first, those that are verified will be uploaded to the registry. Where Yukon Government can uh, use the registry to. Um. Uh, offer bid value reductions um, to those um, contracts. But Amos will let you know more of that. Next slide. So some of the background, um. Uh, back in nineteen ninety-three, the Umbrella Final Agreement was signed, and in that, there's chapters. Or Chapter Twenty-two, which is the Economic Development Chapter. And Sections Twenty-two, Three and Point Three and Twenty-two Point Five. Where contracting opportunities will be offered to Yukon First Nation people. Um, and with that, it's taken. Well, since then, to um, have a Yukon First Nation procurement policy with Yukon Government. And um, just thankful for the government of the day for making that happen. And the Yukon First Nation Government leaders to uh, participate and uh. Tell them what they need um, to make that happen. Um, so that's just a, a timeframe there, so I. Let Amos talk more about it. Um, next slide. So, economic or opportunities between NWT and Yukon. Uh, infrastructure projects. Keep hearing Daryl Bolio in my head. Um, uh, the recruitment of skilled labor. We know that there's a shortage of labor in all Canada. But especially in the north, so how do we get more skilled labor here? Um, investments and alignment with investment guidelines. Um. We, we know there is opportunities, um, and how do we make those investments happen? Um, and that starts with conversations and building relationships. Uh, the challenges between is understanding the different policies between our territories. Um, and our environment, so an education piece is needed there. And understanding the priorities and values of each territory. And keeping apprised of emerging issues. A great example is the climate change. And the impacts of climate change and what that is, is doing for the north. And how can we, one, participate and address the climate change? And of course, developing our relationships, because. You know, um, we grow when we, we have good working relationships and a trusting relationship, so. That I think uh, we can work on. Next slide. I think that's it. So here are some of our initiatives. Um, the Arctic Indigenous Investment Conference. We were planning to have it in February again this year, but. Uh, with the recent outbreak of COVID in Yukon. Um, the risk is too great that uh, it would be canceled. So we're postponing it to May twenty twenty-two. The Pan-Arctic Business Leader Summit, um, the Zoom uh, went well last year. So we may consider um, having that again in March. Um, every month, we have the CEO before breakfast. Um, and that, that is an opportunity for businesses who want to deal with uh. First Nation Development Courts, meet the CEOs, and it gives them an, an opportunity to, one, introduce themselves. Um, to um, uh, introduce investment opportunities. Or in, introduce project ideas or concepts. Or if it's a government agency like uh, the Trade Commissioner's Office. It provides an opportunity to, to relay what's new. Um. As an example, Heather McIntyre um, recently um, presented to them about exporting. So that was good. Uh, this COO breakfast before hours, um. That is done more on a quarterly basis, and that just have, it's at the. Manage, or I should say, the administration level, the finance level. And it's more of uh, technical uh, processes. And the CEO and Partnership Series panels. We've had two since uh, the procurement policy. It's a opportunity to build education and awareness of the process. Um, on how to uh, build meaningful relationships between Yukon First Nation. Um, businesses and the business industry. And members networking events, like I said, the members' reception and the Roundup Reception. And all of this helps uh, to increase awareness and educate. It builds relationships, attracts investments, and um. We, we just feel that it, it, it provides a value to our members, so. Next slide. And here are some of our projects, the Yukon First Nation Business Survey, the. Yukon Inter-Transportation Research Project, the Yukon Story, it's a branding exercise. The Single Trap to Success, which is the youth leadership. Uh, uh, initiative that Bill built uh. Uh, mountain bike trails on Montana Mountain in Carcross. That the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge visited it in uh, twenty eighteen, I think it was. Um, it helped build their self-esteem, their confidence, and their leadership skills. While um, having a tangible asset. And the Yukon First Nation Business Registry, which is currently being implemented, so. Next slide. And a little bit about our contact information. Um, since I wrote this, our uh, project and events manager has also put us on Instagram and YouTube. So um, you will be able to view some of the um, stuff that we do there. And uh, you'll see the logos of our, our uh, First Nation Development Courts on uh. On the other side. With that said, Masuk Cho, thank you. Nelsi, um, for allowing me the time to. uh present to you. And do you have any questions?
Thanks, Monsieur Drapo. Um I think what we'll we'll do is uh we'll hold off on the questions for now and we'll get the presentation from your colleague, Amos Westrop, uh on the procurement side. And then I think we'll open it up to uh our to everybody for questions. So um why don't you go ahead, Mister Westrop, uh uh with your presentation? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Um yeah, good, good morning. Thank you very much, uh Chair, and uh thank you, Committee members, for having us in this morning. Um I'm a White Horse based consultant. Uh and my role in the development of the Yukon First Nations procurement process was policy was to provide advisory services to the Yukon First Nations Caucus. Um and so one of the things I I want to start by saying is despite the uh title of the policy, uh in my view, this is not a procurement policy. Uh procurement uh in this case is a platform for supporting Yukon First Nations business development and Yukon First Nations workforce development. And if you look in Canada, uh as well as abroad, at at similar policies, uh governments, these governments are are recognizing uh that they're that the funds that they spend buying goods and services from the market present opportunities to support uh socially and economically disadvantaged groups in society. And governments can do that by modifying the procurement rules governing procurement regime uh to increase the access of these groups to opportunities connected to procurement. Uh so with that lens, let me just briefly uh go to the next slide. I'm gonna walk the committee through uh at a very high level, the Yukon First Nations procurement policy. I'll start by uh reviewing the process, the collaborative process that was used in its development. Uh then I'll give a high-level overview of the what I think are the major policy components. And then I'll finish off by uh just providing the status of uh policy implementation. So let's uh let's go to the next slide. So as Albert alluded to in his remarks, uh back in December twenty eighteen, uh the Minister of Highways and Public Works issued a letter to each of the fourteen Yukon First Nations governments, inviting those governments uh to identify representatives to participate uh in a collaborative process with Yukon government officials to develop a Yukon First Nations procurement policy. And that triggered uh a two-year process where uh the parties would meet at what we called a technical working group that consisted of Yukon First Nations uh caucus representatives as well as uh government Yukon representatives led by Catherine Harwood, who's the Assistant Deputy Minister at H W responsible for uh Yukon government's procurement regime. Okay? And we discussed issues that First Nation Caucus reps had with the current procurement regime. We talked about solutions. Uh we looked at what other governments were doing. For example, what uh the Nunavut government's doing over in uh uh Nunavut with uh their uh procurement uh Umit uh procurement policy. We looked at the procurement's uh procurement strategy on Aboriginal business, the federal uh procurement strategy. Uh we looked at a bit further field of Australia. And this sort of, these discussions about issues, solutions and what other governments were doing, sort of a cauldron, if you will. And out of that cauldron, certain concepts uh started to emerge. Uh and of course, concepts are what uh are are sort of the foundations of policies. You don't get policies without first thinking about concepts in relation to public policy issues that you're trying to solve. And so once concepts had emerged and, you know, there was general support for the concept at the technical working group, those concepts then were sent down to a a sub-working group of technicians uh that included uh Yukon government officials and myself. And it was our job to translate the concept into policy language. And once that happened, we sent the concept and the policy language back to the technical working group. They reviewed it to make sure that it represented what was discussed and agreed to at the table. Uh and so it was through this whole process uh that Yukon First Nation Caucus representatives and Yukon government were able to build this policy through a collaborative process. And there are just a couple of things I want to highlight um you know before we we go to the next slide. The first thing is, um you know, and these are factors that I think contributed to the success of the development process. The first one was Yukon government, to their credit, came to the table with a blank canvas. They didn't have preconceived notions about what these outcomes, what the outcomes should be for this policy. That created the room for the table to come up with creative solutions, not to be afraid to suggest uh options that perhaps were unorthodox. Um the second thing I would say is that the government of Yukon also provided caucus with room to meet uh without Yukon government present. You got to recognize, and I think Albert alluded to this, we have rural-based First Nations, we have urban-based First Nations, we have First Nations that were interested in workforce development, we have First Nations that were interested in business development. And so rather than trying to have discussions about our interests as a collective uh in front of the government of Yukon, we had quiet discussions away from the table to identify our interests and reconcile those interests so that when we were going into discussions with the government of Yukon, it was with a unified voice. The final thing I'll say is that collaborative decision-making or collaborative policy development is 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 not something that is uh particularly um widespread in this country. Uh I don't think you can point to a lot of examples where one government is sitting down with another government or other governments to engage in authentic uh policy development. Uh but I would suggest this is a clear example uh of of joint policymaking and that it's a it's it's definitely a model that could be emulated elsewhere. So with that, let's um let's get into the core pieces of the policy. So Jennifer, if you wanna go to the next page. Um you know, every policy uh starts with a set of objectives. And in the case of the Yukon First Nations procurement policy, we have three objectives. Although I'm gonna focus uh my commentary on the on the first objective, and that is uh the policy is intended to provide Yukon First Nations people uh or is 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 meant to strengthen the self-sufficiency of Yukon First Nations people and to increase their participation in Yukon's economy. Albert uh mentioned the Yukon First Nations Final Agreements earlier. Uh that first objective comes out of chapter twenty-two, which is the chapter addressing economic developments of Yukon First Nations uh final agreement. So it's very much inspired by that objective. Uh but we've built on that objective uh by building in the notion that uh this policy uh is intended to uh contribute to a reduction in the gaps that exist between outcomes uh between Yukon First Nations people and the territorial population. And so we have these three objectives um identified in the policy. The question then is, what tangible actions is government going to take to achieve these objectives? And that's where we get into the key features of the policy. And if you want to move to the next slide, I'll start with uh the participation measures. The you what we call the Yukon First Nations Participation Measures. And these participation measures can be divided into two categories. The first category is our measures intended to support business development. And the second category uh of 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 measures are measures that are intended to uh support workforce development. So when I talk about business development, what I mean are measures that are going to increase the number and value of procurements that are awarded to Yukon First Nations businesses or uh to bids involving Yukon First Nations businesses as a way of uh supporting the creation of new First Nation businesses, supporting the growth of existing uh businesses and as well as their expansion. Uh in a similar vein, when I talk about worker workforce development uh measures, I'm talking about measures that connect Yukon First Nations people uh with procurement opportunities related to employment, training and skills uh skills development. So let me give you a couple of examples of, or one example of a business uh development measure as well as a workforce development measure. So uh the policy provides for the creation of set-asides. And a set-aside is a procurement tool, uh it's a public procurement tool where uh only Yukon First Nations uh would be invited to respond, or pardon me, only Yukon First Nations businesses would be invited to respond uh uh to that uh particular procurement. An example of a work uh worker or workforce development measure is in relation to a value-based procurement. So a value-based procurement is a procurement process uh where uh price is not the only factor that determines procurement award, uh proponent, uh experience, methodology, work plan would be taken into consideration as well as other uh factors. In a value-based competitive process, uh the procurement policy mandates that uh twenty percent of the total points available would be awarded to firms that are committing to hire uh Yukon First Nations people as are of a project, completing the project. Um one of the things that Albert mentioned earlier uh had to do with what we'll call information exchange. Um one of the issues uh that uh the First Nation Caucus identified early on was that they that their communities were receiving information on territorial procurements at a stage that did not allow them to do any uh lead-up planning to get ready to maximize advantages uh or maximize opportunities connected uh to those procurements in uh traditional territories. And so the to address this, one of the measures that is introduced by the policy is a commitment by the territorial government to sit down with each of the First Nation governments on an annual basis to walk through the capital spending plan, uh the five-year capital spending plan, which identifies the investments that the territorial government is going to be making within that traditional territory, the capital uh investments uh that is. Uh and this gives uh the First Nation government, the community, its businesses uh and people, an opportunity to start thinking about how they can maximize and derive benefits from uh major projects like the construction of schools or infrastructure that will be incurring um within that First Nations traditional territory. Um something else that Albert mentioned was trying to raise the profile of Yukon First Nations businesses. That was definitely an issue that was raised by the First Nation Caucus. And so in response to that, uh as Albert mentioned, uh the Yukon First Nations Business Registry uh is identified as a tool for connecting Yukon First Nations businesses to the market. Um and so not only is this uh registry intended to be a uh well, it it it's not just meant to be uh uh you know, uh it's not meant just to verify uh that a business uh meets the uh definition of Yukon First Nations business that aligns in the policy, but it's also meant to be a marketing tool. Uh so the intention is that once a business is admitted, uh the registrar, Y F N C C, will support that business in developing a business profile that will be publicly facing on the registry so that procurement authorities or those individuals representing the government of Yukon who are interested in buying goods and services can go to that business profile, find out about the experience of that business, the types of goods and services, the business office, any certifications, et cetera. What's more is because it's going to be public-facing, we're hoping that other uh organizations, you know, that the private sector will use uh the registry uh to access First Nation businesses as part of buying goods and services from First Nation businesses or exploring partnerships uh with First Nation businesses. Um the final components I want to touch on uh relates to uh this idea of continuous improvement. So you've got a policy, it's got a set of objectives. We have a series of participation measures that are meant to uh make progress in uh achieving those objectives. How do you know you're making any progress? How do you know if the measures are having the desired effect? How do you know if there are unintended consequences that weren't considered as you were developing and implementing a policy? Well, this is where the performance measurement framework comes in, which is mandated by the policy. And so the performance measurement framework has a series of components. I won't go through through them all, but one of the key components relates to an evaluation plan. And it's the evaluation plan where you find a series of questions which are intended to ask about or, you know, essentially assess uh how that procurement policy uh how the procurement policy measures are working. It also identifies uh the lines of evidence that you'll use uh to answer uh those questions in the form of data and information that is going to be collected by the government of Yukon. Another key feature of the performance measurement framework is the Monitor and Review Committee. This is a committee that's comprised of an equal number of Yukon First Nations, industry association and Yukon government representatives. And it's their responsibility to take the data and information that uh Yukon government is collecting it, review it, uh assess it and identify recommendations where various measures aren't working as well as they should have, as as well as they should be. Um another uh key feature of the uh performance measurement framework uh is a commitment to, on the part of the Yukon government, to undertake uh periodic independent evaluations at uh five-year intervals. And so that's a fairly high-level uh overview of of the policy. Uh what I'd like now is just to turn to, briefly turn to uh the next slide and uh provide a bit of an overview of uh implementation. Uh so the policy was developed from uh December twenty eighteen to uh December twenty eighteen, well, December twenty twenty. That was a two-year process. In December, um well, it was really the autumn of twenty twenty, uh a lot of our time was spent uh briefing decision-makers within First Nation governments uh as well as uh territorial governments officials. Uh so the the territory territorial officials invited us to meet with deputy ministers and 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 folks within departments to talk about the policy, brief them on the policy. And we invited our territorial officials to participate in leadership briefings with Yukon First Nations governments. Um in January twenty twenty-two, or pardon me, twenty twenty-one, uh the policy came into effect. That was the effective date of the policy. But the government of Yukon wisely adopted a graduated approach to policy implementation. What I mean by that is rather than having all of the measures coming into effect on January What I mean by that is rather than having all of the measures coming into effect on January 22nd, they identified staggered dates for different policy measures to come into effect. And so fast forward to September 28th, the Monitor and Review Committee had its first meeting. It's now up and running. Representatives have been appointed by their principals. On October 4th, that was a big day for the chamber. That's when the Yukon First Nations Business Registry was launched and the final measures of the policy came into effect. Although that's not quite accurate. It'd be more accurate to say that we have a couple of workforce development concepts that are referenced in the policy that are in the initial stages of development. But for those, all other measures have now been implemented and are or will be deployed. So let's go to the final slide. It's hard to encatch, it's hard to capture all the work that has necessarily gone into this, but what I thought I would do is identify a couple of links for, you know, if you are interested. The first link is a link to the procurement policy itself. The procurement policy is embedded within the government of Yukon's overall procurement policy. It's located, YFNPP is located in Section 11. There are a lot of resources that the government of Yukon has developed as part of making sure that the business community and Yukon First Nations communities and businesses are informed about how this policy works. So you can go to the second link and it will give you a bunch of resources on, you know, explaining the policy as well as how-to videos to better understand the mechanics of the policy. And then finally, I had to include a reference to the Yukon First Nations Business Registry. I think this is a really exciting tool that is going to be both beneficial to the government of Yukon and the procurement authorities that are buying goods and services. But it's also going to be a tool that the business community can access, like I said, as part of fostering or creating partnerships with Yukon First Nations businesses and people as part of the successful implementation of this, of this policy. So with that, I would like to turn chair, turn matters over to the chair and answer any questions that I have about the policy.
Great, thank you very much for the two presentations. Just a few quick remarks. We've been joined by Jane Whalen Armstrong, the MLA for Moultrie. Thanks, Jane, for joining us in the meeting this morning. Just to let our presenters know that last week we did meet with Mr. Daryl Bolio with Den and Day Development Investments and Paul Gruner with Denton Cho Corporation, who you folks are familiar with as well. So we've been doing a little bit of our homework as well. You know, it's great to hear some of the experience from Yukon. We do actually do some things here pretty well. We actually have a co-drafting of resource management, lands resources legislation that is taking place with our Indigenous governments. So we do some good stuff in that area. We do need to improve our procurement and I think we've got some great ideas that we've heard here today. And lastly, for me, I've spent a lot of time in Yukon, visited all the communities except Old Crow and hope to get there sometime soon. So, but thanks very much for all of that. And I'm going to turn it over to committee members. And maybe we can have a couple of questions from each committee member. And if we keep our questions short and our answers short, we can maybe get a couple of rounds. And so we'll start with Mrs. Nalkelby. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to both of the presenters for their comments and presentations. I thought a lot of what you said resonated with us as far as understanding of the issues that face our territory and the similarities between the two. I think we, we're such small jurisdictions, it's great that we can collaborate. And I know we often look to the Yukon for what you guys have done and not reinventing the wheel, which as an engineer I really like. So I guess I had a couple of questions just around, you had said you'd done some survey work with your businesses. So I'm just wondering if those survey results could be shared with our committee if they're not publicly available already. I think it would be good information for us to hear what Indigenous businesses are saying there. And I guess a little bit around what I had heard when I was the minister before and as well now as an MLA is the capacity of the First Nation businesses and Indigenous businesses to, you know, carry out some of the the funding applications or the proposal work and things like that. And then you had mentioned that, you know, say Newmont's project would have to consult with three different nations. Do you, does the First Nation Chamber of Commerce facilitate those types of conversations? And I apologize, my cat is playing in the background, so I'm not sure if that's being picked up on the mic. But do you facilitate that work and provide some of that sort of business aid in order to help First Nations focus more on their business versus, you know, the business, like the capacity of the business skills? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Nalkelby. I think there was at least a couple of questions she snuck in there. So I'll go to Mr. Drappo first for whether you do have any survey results that you might be able to share with us offline. And then secondly, about what sort of support or role you might play with regard to facilitation of, for individual projects. Thanks. And whether both of you want to respond to that one, I'll leave it to you guys. But go ahead.
So, thank you. Yes, Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce does help facilitate conversations between parties. I'm going to use the Casino Project and Paul West sells and my First Nation. We have initiated contact with the First Nation Development Corp. And in turn, they foster the introductions to the First Nation government. The Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce avoids doing direct contact with the government. We try to stay business-to-business. We respect that there is a fine line with the Yukon First Nation governments and the businesses. And so the, if that relationship can occur at the Development Corp level, they can then share their respective values and communication protocols with their respective First Nation governments. So we do help foster that along. We do help with public engagement. The, the pre-COVID, it was the Yukon YMD, Yukon Mineral Development Strategy. Sorry, I had to think about that. It's been a while. Where we brought our members together, we worked with the Yukon Mineral Development Strategy Committee to look at proposed legislation. We fostered that relationship with Yukon Chamber of Mines, Yukon Chamber of Commerce, and White Horse Chamber of Commerce to facilitate engagement sessions with the business sector and our members. And that went well. And out of that came input into the mining development strategy. Another example would be the engagement in the transportation, aviation transportation sector. Getting input from our members or to participate in public discussions on how to improve the aviation sector for Yukon. The other, like, how do I say this? For, for larger projects, we can definitely foster the engagement process that allows it. So as an example, during the procurement process, we gathered the Yukon First Nation Development Corps together into a forum to provide input to AMOS and the team on what was important for them, what should be looked, what barriers there were, what kind of solutions there were, and the type of things that should be looked at or considered when developing the policy. So it is, it is beneficial to have those discussions and input from the people on the ground. And I think it's just doing it right the first time. The Yukon First Nation Business Survey is definitely online with Yukon government, Yukon Bureau of Stats, and I can definitely share that with you. I will send it to Jennifer after the presentation. Was there another question? I thought there were three.
Well, let's, you did a great job on those two. And we can come back to Ms. Nalkelby, but I'm going to go to Mr. Johnston next. And Jane, we'll come back to you, okay? But Ryland, you go ahead. And thanks very much for the helpful response and pointing us in the direction of the survey results. Ryland, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to our presenters. My first question is a bit of a purely technical question in that the procurement targets right now are 25% for First Nation businesses in White Horse and then, no, 15% for businesses, First Nation businesses in White Horse and 25% outside of White Horse. Can I clarify whether that percentage includes negotiated contracts? And then I guess the more broad question I have is, is any of the policy or the discussion or lessons learnt about providing direction on when to enter into negotiated contracts that came out of this process? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So the, the targets that you're talking about, I think, are in relation to, they're based on population. So the ratio of Yukon First Nation to non-Yukon First Nation people. And the, the idea with targets is they quantify success. And so when it comes to the number and value of contracts that are going to, are being awarded to Yukon First Nations on an annual basis, what we're looking to do is award at least 15% of those contracts to Yukon First Nations businesses, okay? But recognizing that we're in the early stages of the implementation of this policy and that it's going to take time, Yukon government has adopted a graduated approach to targets. And so in the first year, the first year is about establishing a baseline. Typically, in the perfect world, in a perfect world, you would establish your baseline before you introduce an intervention. But the data's not there. And so we're collecting that data as Albert has indicated. And so, you know, I would expect over the course of the, you know, the next, you know, five to seven years, we're going to build up toward that 15%. But in that intervening period, the targets will be something less than 15%. In other words, deputy ministers marching orders will be something less than 15%. But the idea is that there are a number of tools in the way of participation measures that will allow departments to achieve those targets. In other words, we're not relying on one tool. And sorry, what was the second question? Could you just repeat that? I missed it.
And thanks, Mr. Westrop, Mr. Johnston.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, well, I'll just make a comment first. Just like, you know, if the NWT takes a similar approach, we should be somewhere aiming for a target of 55% because that would be the corresponding Indigenous population. And I also know that we don't quite have that data. So it's a, it's a gap we need to fill. But my, this, my second part of the question is, the way I read the policy, there's still quite a bit of room for negotiated contracts and just any lessons learnt about when to enter into negotiated contracts. This seems to me to be the big piece we need to provide some policy clarity on. So any guidance you have on how you can put into policy when the government should be ending into alternative procurement or negotiated contracts with First Nations would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a fantastic question. You know, we spell out circumstances where we would, where a government procurement authority should pursue a direct award or awarding a contract without competition. Obviously, governments want to make sure that they're, generally want to make sure that their procurements are competitive. But there are circumstances where you don't do competitive procurement because it's just going to be, take too long. For example, if you're buying staples or something like that. But in the case of the policy, the policy identifies circumstances when you would undertake a direct award. For example, if a department is behind in meeting its targets, that would be an occasion to use a direct award. Another example would be where there is an under-representation of First Nation businesses within a particular sector. That would be another justification for proceeding with a direct award. I should mention at this point that direct awards that are provided for in the Yukon First Nations policy have to fall under a certain threshold, a certain, certain value threshold. If they're to go above that, that triggers another process. The final point I would make in response to your question, Mr. Johnston, is when is it appropriate to engage in these negotiations? I think that's a really important issue that you need to sort of. One of the answers we came up with was when you have a major project that's going to be occurring within the traditional territory of a First Nation, one of those major projects that's high-value, that doesn't happen every year, like the construction of a school, like the construction of key infrastructure. In those cases, our, this policy provides for the negotiation of a community development agreement. And the idea of this community development agreement, it's inspired by impact benefit agreements or major project agreements. The idea is very similar that where a major project's going to be occurring within a traditional territory, the First Nation, its citizens, businesses should derive maximum benefit from that opportunity, whether it's business opportunities or workforce development opportunities.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much. Mr. Johnston, you snuck a couple of questions in too. So if you want to get back on the list, let me know. But I'm going to go to Ms. Whalen Armstrong. Jane, do you have any questions?
Hi, yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It's, there's lots, lot of good information that we can surely use in our areas as well. But it's, it's good, we're on, we're doing this. There's, there's a dialogue. And I'm just taking in all the information at the moment. So I have no questions, but I really do enjoy. Thank you. Good informative.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks very much, Ms. Whalen Armstrong. So, yeah, no. So, yeah, no, really good information we're getting. Uh, I'll turn to Mr. Noran, um, see if you have any questions. Okay, not hearing any there. I might just squeeze in a couple myself here, if that's okay. Um, you know, look, I support an Indigenous procurement policy for the Northwest Territories as well, but I'm kinda curious to know what kinda general reaction you've had from the non-Indigenous business community about all of this and, um, yeah, if you can speak to that at all. Thanks.
You wanna start it? Would you like me to?
Um, I would say that there is mixed reviews. Um, and definitely there is an education piece on it. Um, uh, I think there is a fear from the Yukon business community that all the contracts, all, everything will just go to Yukon First Nation businesses. And that's not the case. Um, and that's where the education piece comes in. And that's, that is, really, we need to show some scenarios of how a bid value reduction would work. Um, we need to, we need to um share the stories of what Yukon First Nation business relationship looks like, how they can work together with them. Um, we had the two serious panels. One was with the CEOs telling their stories about how they want to to work with the Yukon business community. Um, the other one was the reverse of the Yukon business community explaining and sharing their stories of their partnerships with Yukon First Nation uh corporations and businesses. Again, I say that Yukon is small and that we need to work together. Um, when Yukon First Nation businesses succeed, we all succeed. Um, I remember Paul Gruner saying, you know, this Yukon First Nation procurement policy, it's, the pie is not getting smaller. With certainty, there's more investment coming into the territory. So the pie is actually growing and there will be more opportunities for everyone. So I'll turn it over to Amos.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a very good question that you've asked. Uh, what I would say in response is that whatever process that the GNWT is thinking about building up, has to be respectful of the government-to-government relationship that it has with its Indigenous governments throughout the NWT. Uh, but I think another consideration relates to the role of industry uh and the representatives of various industry associations. Because I, I've always maintained in my discussions with caucus that industry, they are not stakeholders here, they are our partners. This policy will not be successful without their support and engagement. And so whatever process uh is developed, where there is a process developed, um, I wanna make sure that it's respectful of the intergovernmental relationship, but that, uh, you know, uh, industry is being engaged as partners. Um, you know, I would say in the, you know, and I didn't mention this in my presentation, but I would say that there has been a lot of discussions between industry, First Nation governments, First Nation development corporations, and the Yukon government as a result of this policy. A lot of these conversations did happen after the policy was brought into effect on January 22nd. But in my view, the fact that these conversations are occurring with more frequency uh and they're occurring in a greater depth than previously, in my mind speaks to the success of this policy. And it's through these conversations that we are gonna be successful. I just have to go get my power cord.
No, that's really helpful. I very much appreciate that. Um, and of course, uh, some of this arises from rights-based negotiations and, you know, economic measures provisions in our land rights agreements over here. So, you know, it's all part of reconciliation as well. But I'm gonna turn back to Ms. Nalkaby for second round, so why don't you go ahead, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so my, yeah, my third question I snuck in there was about capacity and helping businesses with sort of more of the like housekeeping and accounting admin-type stuff. Uh, I reflect on a fisherman I met in Tack who's like, I just wanna drive my boat. I don't wanna jump through all these hoops to have, be able to take out people onto the ocean. So, um, my question was, yeah, I'll start with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a really important question because, um, as someone told me, this policy is not a panacea. It's not gonna, it's not going to um necessarily address all the obstacles faced by Yukon First Nations businesses, but it does provide an avenue uh for beginning to uh address some of these obstacles. So, you know, let me, let me give you an example. Um, the Business Registry uh is, you know, I think is gonna be an excellent resource, not only for uh the Chamber, uh, but it's also gonna be a resource that the Department of Economic Development can use in the sense that you're gonna have a list of a bunch of Yukon First Nations businesses. You're gonna be able to start asking specific questions about uh the challenges that they have in relation to exactly what you were talking about. What are those internal issues, uh, whether it's financial controls or other policies or uh filling out applications? What are the challenges that you're facing? Because once we know those challenges, we can start developing business development programming to respond to those, or we can start connecting uh those First Nation businesses to existing uh business development programming. And I, you know, I wanna emphasize this point again. This is not a procurement policy. This is a policy using procurement as a platform to support workforce development and business development. So what are some of the other resources that need to be integrated within this framework to support business development? Uh, that, that's the question that I think we have to ask ourselves and to start challenging ourselves on, because by, without asking that question, pieces of the puzzle are gonna, aren't gonna be on the table.
Yep, that's great. Thanks very much. Katrina, a second one?
Yeah, thank you for that. And I agree, I, my former life was a consultant. So even just as a consultant, trying to find First Nation businesses to use on my proposals and bids was difficult. So having a resource like this would be useful even to like the private sector and knowing where they can go if they do want to be more proactive in their, their use of their dollars. So I guess my last question, and I apologize if I'm making you repeat yourself and I maybe just missed it. Um, who verifies who would be considered to be an Indigenous business? Uh, I, I think I heard that it was the Chamber or I'm not quite sure. But i- in our situation, I know that the Yukon is more advanced in a lot of their land claims, et cetera. Um, I, we've had some issues where there has been contracts going out to specific uh Indigenous regions and there's been question, I guess, as to what list is being used, which I know your list would sort of nullify that. But I, I see a bit of concern or issues in the future here with us not being settled and what then would become, you know, constituting an Indigenous business. Is it 50% ownership? Is it, you know, maybe a little bit more information on that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Ms. Nalkaby. Go ahead. It's probably for Mr. Westrop. Go ahead.
I'll defer to my colleague, Chair, if that's okay, and then maybe I'll add, uh...
Yep, go ahead.
So, um, you are right, uh, Katrina. It's Yukon First Nation Chamber of Commerce who does receive the applications and verifies the businesses. Um, that process, our agreement with Yukon Government started October 4th. Um, and we have a, we had a two-month uh period where we are taking the time that we need to review um the documents presented and if need be, um, request further documents to verify those businesses. And there are different, uh, I'm gonna call them tiers. So like corporations, um, uh, partnerships, sole proprietors, um, non-Indigenous companies that support a First Nation family. And I should qualify that to...
Oops, uh, they may have, uh, maybe frozen there.
Agreements, um, there are the corporation documents, the bylaws, um, partnership agreements, um, uh, verification from, um, their First Nation government, like confirmation that they... Because we can't ask for confidential information. So confirmation from the First Nation that they are indeed a citizen, because they can be non-status, um, but still a citizen of a First Nation. So confirmation from a First Nation that they are a citizen, um, or a status card. Um, and the share structures um in the corporation documents. And, um, out of the 40-plus that we have, um, we are still requesting more information. So it is a time, time-consuming process. We wanna do this right because we know that the Yukon business community has fears that companies are gonna game the system. And, you know, it's our reputation on the line. Um, we are not doing this uh, um, to game the system. We are doing this because Yukon First Nation people have an opportunity to grow. They have an opportunity to build their capacity and businesses. And we want to see them succeed. Um, uh, we want to be able to with surety say you are indeed a Yukon First Nation businesses. You've provided the information and the documentation. And it is a time-consuming process. We do have a dedicated person. We're looking for one more dedicated person for it. So, yeah. And what?
Yeah, just very briefly, the verification process is super important. Uh, Yukon First Nations want to be assured that businesses that are being admitted to the uh Registry and that are benefiting from the policy are in fact Yukon First Nations businesses. If they aren't, they're not advancing the objectives of the policy. So, uh, and we certainly had a lot of discussions with governments with similar policies about their experiences. And we're hoping that we are building a verification system that is informed by those experiences so that we're not repeating some of the issues that arose within those contexts.
And for those complicated applications, um, uh, we do have access to a lawyer um to review, um, and we do have access to the Monitor and Review Committee, Valuation Committee, um, to review complex applications as well.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, it sounds like quite a robust system compared to ours over here. So no, that's great. Katrina, did you have a second question?
I think that was actually my second question. I'm good. But thank you so much and I do see a lot here we can take and apply. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Johnson. Anything further?
Uh, no, just thank you to both our presenters today. It's very important.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thanks. I'll just turn one last time, Ms. Wayland Armstrong or Mr. Noran. Anything that you'd like to ask? Okay, maybe I'll just have one more um quick question. Um, and I think you've touched on this a little bit, but, um, generally, what kinda public reporting is there around uh the work that's done here? Is there like an annual report that will be put together on implementation? Uh, whether, you know, uh, the targets are met or the proportion of Indigenous procurement is increasing, business development? I, I'm just kinda curious around how that's handled over there. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I mentioned to men, I, I intended to mention that there is an annual report. And so the Monitor and Review Committee will prepare an annual report tracking the success of the policy on an annual basis. Uh, and that report will be circulated to First Nation governments, the territorial government, and industry associations. And it's, it's, it's part of making sure that there is an accountability piece and a transparency piece built into this, uh, this, this overall framework. Um, so that, you know, where there are issues with achieving targets, um, those aren't hidden, uh, that those are out in plain sight and that there's sort of an obligation implied there that not only will the Monitor and Review Committee generate recommendations in response, but that government of Yukon will respond to the recommendation uh in a timely fashion to address whatever issues being identified. But, yeah, no, thank you for that.
Okay, no, that's helpful again. Uh, look forward to seeing maybe the first report when it, when it does come out. But, um, I don't think there's anything further from, from our side for now. So, uh, just wanted to take the time to thank you very much for presenting today and taking our questions. I, I think we have a lot to learn from the Yukon in terms of Indigenous um, uh, business development and procurement. And I think you've given us lots to mull over and think about in terms of what kinda direction we can and perhaps should be going in here in the Northwest Territories. So if we have anything further that we wanna follow up with, we may send you an email or something. But again, thanks very much for the presentation and the time with you today.
Yeah, thank you to you and your committee and the team for organizing this. And thanks for reaching out. We're happy to share. And stay safe and take care.
And likewise, merci beaucoup from us in Whitehorse. And if I get over to Whitehorse this next summer coming up, I'll look you guys up. But thank you again so much. And we'll say bye, but I would ask my colleagues to stay on the call. We have a bunch of our internal business to deal with. But merci beaucoup again. Thanks very much.
Sure, you're gone. Yeah, that's the show.